It is 7:42 and the date is Monday, May 13th. And if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we please have the roll call, Susan? Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Thank you, Susan. I'd also just like to acknowledge that we have troop leader Joe Matthews from Troop 44 Matunic and we have Ben Matthews here who's working on the Communication merit badge. So, welcome to the town chambers. We also have former school committee member Dr. Anthony Magar in our chambers tonight. Which brings us to the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session of April 22nd, 2013.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have motion and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. We also have the regular session from April 22nd and April 29th.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Would any counselor like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Which brings us to licenses. This is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the Wakefield Festival feat on Main Street between Robinson Street and Kenyon Avenue on Saturday, October 5th, 2013, from 10 to 5 p.m. to the Downtown Merchants Association, known and now as Wakefield Village Association, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town, issuance of a certificate of insurance for the festival's feat that names the town as an additional insured for the event and the amount specified by the risk manager, Traffic and Transportation Review Committee approval, and Rhode Island Department of Transportation approval. And the application is by Joan Dwyer, 315 Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island. This is a new application. Steve, did you have any words before I asked Joan to come to the mic?
No, just let Joan make the presentation.
Joan, if you'd like to come forward and tell us a little bit about this endeavor. Welcome.
Hi, guys. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I also have Jennifer and David who run Festival FET. I guess in a nutshell, Festival FET has been hugely successful in building community and offering a wide variety and supporting the arts and supporting the community they're in. And they bring 140 artists and they support nonprofits. And we've been trying to run festivals in downtown Wakefield. I've been part of downtown Wakefield for 19 years now and we're the people who started the River Fires and we've done a lot of great things. But organizing and paying for these, what always ended to be somewhat small festivals are a lot of work. And I asked Jennifer if she would come and do one in Wakefield because she only does three or four a year. And so, I feel like we have a bit of a coup here in that we got to get Festival FET in Wakefield. And so, that's why we're having it. All the merchants on down on Main Street are excited about it. There are some people here and you have signatures of, I went door to door getting signatures for people who couldn't come today. And you have a little, you know, you have a worksheet from Jennifer about Festival FET and she just gave you her advertising packets. She'll do $10,000 or so of advertising just for the Wakefield show, you know. And so, it will get a lot, a lot of, our goal is during the shoulder season for merchants is to bring people to Wakefield who'd never come here. I know my business is kind of a business that attracts people from all over the state and when I say to them, you know, "We're in Wakefield," they're like, "Westerly," you know, "Wickford," you know. But to really bring them to Wakefield and to get Wakefield as a known place that they'll be interested in coming here beyond that one event. Do you need to know anything else specifically?
Let me see if there's any questions here at the table. Any questions?
I do, if you don't mind. I think that there's only one issue that I think that will be brought up that needs to be addressed and we talked about it briefly before this, parking issues. That's something that really needs to be in place and the fact that emergency services need to get through Kenyon to go to the hospital or things of that nature if the roads are blocked off. Those are, you know, two issues that just need to be addressed. I think the concept is wonderful. I think the town needs the recognition. I'm supporting the fact that, I applaud you for trying to bring this into our town. I think it's a great thing. But I think we really need to look into those two issues.
I can address the Kenyon one kind of quickly. The Kenyon road's going to be completely open. We're stopping it at El Fuego. So, we intentionally, you can get down Robinson, you can get down Kenyon. And so, we wanted it to go further and Jennifer walked and measured the road every which way. But because we knew that both Kenyon and Robinson would need some access, they're both going to be open. So, we're closing a smaller part of the street than we've even closed for the other, some other, our old fairs that we've had in the past. So, that solves that problem. Jennifer can give you more. Why don't you give her some statistics about parking and then I'll tell you where, places that we've secured already.
Over the years, I've done art festivals for 20 years and we estimate the attendance, and it's really so weather dependent, but between 2,000 to 4,000. And how you estimate that is you take a car and you estimate that car's going to have four people in it. So, over seven hours, that's how many car, parking lot spaces you have to come up with, which is about 150 to 200 spaces over seven hours. So, taking that information, we've been able to kind of select different locations that we're going to be in walking distance to the festival. I think you can speak to those.
So, we've already talked to Wakefield Lumber and they're going to empty their lot for us. And so, that's going to, I haven't actually measured it, but since it's, we're going to be kind of packing them in and having a parking person there, I think we can fit 100 people or so there. On the back, on the one that she makes for us, on the piece that she's going to make for us, we're going to probably by then know other available parking. And we're going to tell people, we're going to draw a little map and say, "These are parking spots." So, I haven't yet spoken to the high school or the U here at Town Hall or, you know, the church on the corner or a number of, you know, we went around and looked at where all the lots are. Behind High Street, they don't do anything on Saturdays. I've been looking behind the big High Street building. I know Scott Holberg, you know, he's my landlord. Once we get approved, we're going to go make sure that we have approximately that amount at the minimum. That's not to say, I just want to be very honest, that there's not going to be overflow on the street and that it's going to be a busy, crazy place that day. And that's actually a good thing. But we are going to make sure that we have on these flyers where people can park.
Great. Are you going to have a trolley or anything, Joan, if people need a ride from a parking space?
Well, we're figuring from the high school or, places that we're picking, they don't have. If this grows over years, which is the goal, Jennifer would like it to be a two-day event. And then, if, you know, the money is there and everything's there, we've talked about having a trolley. But for the, for our, for the people who are sponsoring it, the trolley would come to be a couple thousand dollars and we just can't justify that now until we see the growth and success.
How many people did you say you expect?
Two to 4,000.
Nice.
Depending on the weather.
It's so weather dependent.
And this is a one-day event, so it's a little more compact.
Maybe you could do something with the bike path, if those who want to park at a certain place and ride the bike in.
Oh, yeah, we could promote the bike. Oh, yeah, that's a good, that's a really good idea. We can promote the bike path.
That somehow on there.
Yeah, I didn't think of that.
And I'm sure we can get permission for you to use the parking lot here at Town Hall.
As we look at Steve.
Steve. I think she's asking. We might as well give that permission now.
The only thing, where is the, I see you have in this brochure the vendor map where it's kind of like a, like, you know, a festival kind of thing rather than it's spread out. Is this all going to be in one area?
We have it in the, on Main Street, on that closed-off section and then behind the building, which is, what do you call it?
Behind that bellies, that parking lot.
Okay.
And the river walk there, that's all going, so it's going to be like parallel of those two places and...
So, some will be on Main Street, some will be behind.
Yeah, you'll go down that driveway and you'll park and there'll be a lot right on the river. And on Main Street, it's going to be like two, right up the middle of the street and so that people can also walk into the stores too, all the stores.
Yes. Which will be lovely because it'll be open to all the retailers and then also behind, which is a beautiful river walk that most people don't get to see.
Well, no, that is beautiful.
We're going to utilize all of that.
The only other thing we kind of had a concern about was, is like you say, "Well, I'm going to go check into this, I want to check into that." It's like someone's, before we approve it, is they have those already checked, going to check into is kind of like checked off.
You can't, quite frankly, are, what I can, you know, between the All That Matters parking lot and Arnold Lumber and the street, we're reaching the amount of parking lots. But, and I can't ask the high school now, they don't know what's happening October 5th. Like, I talked to them, they were like, "Oh, I have to..." So, some of these things you have, you know, you don't know if the church is going to have a wedding on that Saturday. You know, some of these things are going to be, I'm going to talk to everybody, but I can't come here with a promise.
With a promise. I mean, obviously if you have, if you've utilized the, you know, the lot here at Town Hall, possibly Wakefield School, I don't know, it's not a...
We're going to utilize Wakefield School.
That would be a walk right across the...
And, yeah, and there's some other people that I'll, that, you know, we're going to ask. But I think with Arnold Lumber and I think we're...
You're kind of getting to that critical spot.
You could, Joan, use the Peace Dale Lot and they could ride bikes in if you, you know.
I think the bike path is awesome.
And then you might bring some business down there too, you know? I don't know.
I know, originally I was thinking of using a lot where McDonald was and giving them like, you know, something, if they walked in the mall, they can get the trolley free or something. But then the trolley was out of our price range, so that would be a longer-term vision.
Joan, I think that the schools do have a facilities form.
Yes, okay. So, I should go, that would be my next step.
And I don't know if it encompasses, you know, parking lots, but at least it would secure, you know, if there's any other dates. So, if that facilities form, if you could call maybe the superintendent's office.
I could do that this week.
That'd be great.
The other thing I was thinking of, and I know it's for sale, so it might not be an option, but the Larchwood Inn parking lot, because you have parking on the side, parking in the back, there's nobody in that building. If you contacted the owner...
That's a really good one, up by the Elks Club. I could, it's right up, it's really, that's a good one. I didn't think, that's one I didn't think of.
But there's nobody there right now, so that might be...
And right across the street from Arnold Lumber is that lot. Right across the street from Arnold Lumber is the lot. And I talked to Scott Holberg and he said if he doesn't build anything on that lot by then, he'd clear it and we can have that lot. So, we've, I've asked around and I've gotten a lot of like...
Where's that, Joan? Which lot?
Right across the street from Arnold Lumber, there's that lot that's next to Northrup's. Like, I called him right away and he said, you know, he'd eventually like to build something there, but if he doesn't build anything by then, that we could have that lot and he'd make sure it was cleared.
Great. Well, it sounds like you have done your homework. Hey, bring them on, right? Don't worry about that later.
It's going to be a crowd.
Thank you for giving the town more exposure. That's a great thing.
Yeah, that was the goal.
Yeah.
The only question I have is, Sawgatucket Park, would there be any movement with vendors in there?
What's Sawgatucket Park? Oh, yeah, oh, the Wakefield Park, yeah, it's the Wakefield School Park that, when you go over the bridge. We were originally going to put vendors there and Jennifer thought that it needed to be more concentrated and so, right now, we don't have anything planned for the park.
Another idea as we start to plan it is to put entertainment and picnic tables and blankets so families can go across the street and use that space. We have to like feel out the weather, that can get kind of difficult if it's rainy. So, I want to plan it so it can function without, because it is a rain or shine event. So, it can function if it rains, but trying to utilize that if the weather looks good. So, you know, we're going to work that out and see, but I think we could move some entertainment because we bring in $4,000 worth of strolling entertainment for families, so we could do that over there. It's an option.
Wow.
And there's been arrangements with like police detail if needed?
We're going to have, I forgot if it's one or two cars, but two, we, the Wakefield merchants are paying for two cars to be on duty.
Well, it sounds wonderful to me.
And we got approval from the state. We did that, yeah.
I think anything that can give our town more exposure in a safe environment, a healthy environment, and it gives vibrancy to people who don't even live in this community to come and see what we can offer is a very good thing.
And it's something that, you know, what I like about it too is that it's really for all ages. There'll be things for kids to do and adults to do, there'll be food that we, so it really is a community builder for our town as well.
Oh, yeah. Great.
And nobody has a festival in South County. That's, I mean, Narraganta has a small local festival, but there's no one doing a large art festival in South County, so it's an opportunity for the town.
Wow. Great. What's the small festival, the art festival over there?
Narraganta and the...
And then they have the...
At the Towers.
At the Towers.
What's the Road Race? Blessing of the Fleet, that's kind of a festival too, isn't it?
That's the same, that's, yeah.
But I think it's like a large art festival. You think of the Providence Art Festival or the Thayer Street Art Festival, Wickford, East Greenwich, Garden City, those are like 140, 190 vendor large festivals.
Wow. Sounds great.
We're going to have 140.
Wow.
Artists, artists. That's awesome.
So, for all of those people watching TV, October 5th, mark your calendars.
Mark your calendars, right.
All right, and I believe that you are meeting with, is it the Traffic Review Commission on Thursday?
Didn't we do that already? We're going to do it again. Okay, I guess we are.
All right.
Well, I would like to move approval of new license A.
I second that.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Any other questions? And I just want to see if there's any comments from the public before we vote. I see thumbs up. All right, ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, best of luck. You will see us there.
Oh, yay.
Next on the agenda is a public presentation of the proposed courtyard renovation project at South Kingstown High School. Are you Catherine?
I am Catherine.
Catherine Weaver, welcome.
Thank you.
Looking forward to this presentation.
Well, I'm looking forward to sharing it with you very much and I just want to thank you all for giving us the time out of your busy schedule to be here and present what I think is a very innovative and groundbreaking project here in our community.
And I think when you did the presentation to the school committee, we had another meeting that night or something.
I know, I know.
Our apologies.
Well, no, it's hard to get everybody on the same page on a good day.
Yeah, thank you. So, we probably want to dim the lights a little. Thank you.
Can, maybe you can, can you tilt the screen that way a little bit so they can see?
I can see.
You can see, all right?
Yeah.
All right, well, I'd just like to, before I get started, I'd like to acknowledge there are several other people here in the room that have helped to conceive this project, my associates, Matt Palin and Chris Manchester. And since we've developed this project and presented it to the South Kingstown High School and they've generally accepted it, we formed a committee which includes Dr. Mega and Gail Suborio, who's the art teacher there, and several other folks who had other commitments tonight, but may be trickling in if they get done in time, as well as several students. So, I just want to give you a little bit of background about who I am and how this project got started. I'm a landscape architect. I have a small landscape architecture firm in North Kingstown. And the project was initially started by a collaboration between the South Kingstown High School and the URI Landscape Architecture Department, their senior studio. I know that the town has had the opportunity to work with them on several community projects and it's just a win-win opportunity for both the students at URI to be able to participate in real-life problems, complex problems. And also, it's a great asset, I think, for the community because you get a lot of fresh creative ideas and innovation from budding young designers, so. So, I'd like to start this presentation, and we've done several as the project has evolved with this quote, which is a quote from our Secretary of Education, Arne Duncan. And he says, "Right now, in the second decade of the 21st century, preparing our students to be good environmental citizens is some of the most important work any of us can do. It is for our children and our children's children and generations yet to come. Education and sustainability are the keys to our economic future and our ecological future." And that really sets the tone and the stage, I think, for this whole project and how it was conceived. So, as I mentioned, it all started with a request from South Kingstown High School of the Senior Landscape Design Studio to assess the entire faculty, facility at the high school and to have the students look at how the site could be repurposed or redeveloped to become more sustainable. And the class looked at, as I said, the entire site and their goal was to address circulation issues, water runoff, the ecological footprint of the facility and the grounds, the landscape planting, all things that contribute to the footprint of the built environment. So, they did a wonderful job and presented three different options to the, to the school committee and the school body. And they were all very impressed. And actually, I just want to stop for a moment and point out that Mr. Palin here was an intern of mine when he was in the landscape architecture program at URI. And he did such a great job that I ended up hiring him. And then he had, he had the ability to see a project go from a school exercise to a real-life exercise. So, that was a pretty meaningful experience in and of itself. So, they presented the project and they were overwhelmed with enthusiasm and I think a little overwhelmed with the scale of what the project could be. So, they decided that rather than tackle the entire school grounds, that they would pick a small piece. And the school committee was very generous and gave them funds to hire a professional. An RFP was issued and that professional was myself. And we took on a bite-sized piece of the larger, of the larger facility, which is, as you will see, also a very constrained and challenging piece of the entire schoolyard. So, when I became the lead designer for the, for the project, you know, I had to really think about what is this, what is this sustainable retrofit really mean for the school in terms of a smaller, more restricted space? And I did some research and I was very surprised to learn that, you know, schools spend just as much or spend more on energy than any other expense in their, in their budget other than personnel. So, thinking about how you can make a school environment more energy efficient is certainly a worthwhile exercise. And this is just an example of that. I know that the Cranston School Department did some energy audits on their facilities and all of their, the schools in their district and ended up finding ways to retrofit and redevelop their energy policy and actually saved the school district $6 million. And that's, that's without compromising the quality of their educational programs and that's money that can be, you know, certainly redirected to other programs. And that's just... Another thing I looked at was a recent directive by the Rhode Island Department of Education. It is a policy initiative that is in draft form, form right now, but I understand that by the end of this year, it will be, it will be policy and that is using the, the school building as well as the school grounds as part of the learning environment for curriculum. And they call this the school's a tool protocol. So, the school's a tool protocol is again, another way of emphasizing the importance of, of thinking about how we can make our school communities more efficient and more environmentally sustainable and how in so doing, we can also use that exercise as an opportunity to demonstrate model and to teach our students what that's all about. And you'll see there, they had some very good guidelines for how schools might, you know, undertake that process for, for new schools as well as for retrofitting existing schools. And a big part of their, their push is to see, you know, the greening of, of the school building and the, and the grounds actually transition into the curriculum so that teachers feel supported in, in integrating the study of, you know, energy and water, water use, waste and pollution, recycling, water savings, all of these sustainability principles in their curriculum and then having a place to actually demonstrate how to get that, how to get that done. So, now we're going to get to the project itself and I'm going to take you through our design process. Are there any questions up to this point? We started by analyzing this very constricted little space here. And what you're looking at are actually two green spaces. The one on the left, we'd call the west wing, and the one on the, the right is the east wing. There are two green spaces that are actually on the interior of the school building, so they're accessible only through the school. There is no egress to the parking lots or the front of the building into the space. You have to go into the building itself in order to get to this green space. It's kind of what was created as the school building grew over many phases and pieces were added on to the building. Ended up with this enclosed courtyard area in the interior. And it had been, I think, over the years in bits and pieces landscaped for various purposes. There was an attempt at creating an outdoor eating and relaxing place, although it's compromised by the, the choice of trees that were planted there. They're pear trees and when the students come back to school in the fall, it's virtually a swarm of yellow jackets, not terribly hospitable. And there's also an existing memorial in the space that commemorates the passing of two students. And there's, you can see on the bottom middle slide there, there's a, there's a bench, there's a few areas for just sort of quiet contemplation. But other than that, there's really not any kind of space that's been programmed for any specific use. The vegetation hasn't been well-maintained over time, so it's become very overgrown. Some places, it's difficult to walk through at all. The grade is very steep in, in several places. And as, you see, there's a break between the, the two, the two wings and that's actually an overpass on the second floor of the building. So, the way to get from the west wing to the east wing is that you walk under the overpass. Now, those were the existing conditions when we started the project. And since our, our hurricane and our winter storm, this is what, what it looks like now. So, we went from a, a space that was barely usable to a space that's really not usable and impossible to maintain at this point because you can't even get a lawnmower through it. This is just some of the damage that was done this winter. Looks like many of our yards. So, you can see that it's really quite, quite a challenged, quite a challenged area, but it also has a great deal of potential, which is really always the case in limit situations. So, after sort of studying the existing conditions, our second job was to analyze what we found. And we looked at the space from the inside looking out and from the outside looking in. We analyzed where the sun was a problem for the spaces and for the interior of the building, where the building heats up. We looked at where noise was a problem, you know... We looked at where noise was a problem, you know, if people were outside using the space, if there was a classroom close by and the teacher had the windows open, you know, was there a need for noise buffer? We looked where visual distractions were a problem from inside the building, if there's something going on, a teacher was trying to teach a class, and too much activity outside provided a distraction. So, you know, we analyzed the angle of the sun, we looked at the wind patterns, it's very much a little microclimate in there, we discovered. And then from there, we went to looking at, okay, so now we know all the things that are wrong with the space, what is it about the space that's actually usable to us? And that's the beginning of program development, and that is the first step in what then becomes your design. So part of the program development was just looking at the topography and what places were suitable for activities that would require flat areas, where there were grading issues, where we needed to buffer noise, where we needed to create visual barriers, where we needed softening against the building, so forth and so on. So that was the physical part of the program development. And then the other really important piece was involving the people that are going to use the space, starting with the teachers. And we met with them and they were kind enough to respond to a survey that we gave them. And we really wanted to understand how the spaces had been used in the past and if, in a perfect world, the teachers were invited to use the space as part of their different curriculums, what would they like to see there? So that produced an even greater challenge for us. And they came up with a wish list that's really very inclusive. I don't think there was anything that they left out in terms of, you know, what they would like to see in the space that would make it a usable and inviting habitat for students. Some of it involves, you know, creating physical outdoor classroom spaces. Some of it involves developing policy for how the spaces would be used, who maintains the spaces, making sure that the spaces are handicap accessible and available to all students. Go back one. Looking at the circulation, making sure that, you know, if you entered the space from one end of the building, you could get out of the space at the other end of the building and also that maintenance could occur within the space, given the constriction. Anyway, they had a long and creative punch list. So and then there were more boring things like just site amenities, you know, what do we as humans need to be comfortable in this space? If we're going to be having an outdoor classroom space, we need something to ride on, we need something to sit on, we need chairs and tables we can move, we need a performance space, we need tables for eating, we need recycling, we need electricity, we need Wi-Fi, we need a lot of things to make this an inviting and inspiring space. So, looking at all of those constraints and then all of the desires of the faculty and the administration, we came up with a master plan. And, you know, we really challenged ourselves to include everything and everybody in this space. And I think it's easy to see how curriculum like science and math and technology can be supported in an outdoor learning environment, but maybe it's a little bit harder to understand how you might also then create space that supports the arts and humanities and performance and English and social studies. So we really tried to leave nobody out. So this is the space, and I think if you... I don't know, maybe Matt, can you kind of... Can you point? Yeah, there we go. I'm going to walk you into the space in the west wing. The entrance, the major, the main entrance to the space is through the front of the building. You have to walk into the front doors of the school, go down the first floor hallway, and then out through double doors. That's the formal entrance to the space. And then it takes you up some stairs, whereas now there's a steep muddy bank. And the first space that you encounter is a garden of reflections and memories. And one of the important things that we were tasked with was providing a way that the school community could memorialize either students or teachers or events that were important to the school. And so that's the first space that you encounter. And then leaving that space... Did we lose our mouse? There he is. We come to the first outdoor classroom space that seats 30 people. And this is a space that has movable benches and desktops that flip up and fold down. And this is a very sunny part of the space. And so we've proposed that it be a pergola that would provide shade but would also support solar collectors so that electricity can be generated for recharging of laptops and the other small electrical needs that the space has. And then leaving there, we walk through a plant environment. This is a vernal pond environment created to demonstrate for science teachers the importance of a particular kind of wetland habitat that's very common here in southern Rhode Island. And then leaving there, we're going to take you through a dizzying roller coaster ride of this, too. We have a film of it, but I just figured I'd walk you through it this way. It'll be a little bit easier to follow where you're going. You cross under the overpass. There we go, right about there. And at that point, there's a sort of a bump up. Is that the elevator shaft? Yeah, the elevator shaft. At the top of the elevator shaft, there's a perfectly convenient spot for rooftop, a small rooftop garden that you can see walking down the hallway in the connector, the second floor connector between the two wings of the building. And a great opportunity to demonstrate to students the capabilities of a rooftop garden and why those are important to consider in the built environment for all of the wonderful things that they do for us, like capture water and sequester carbon. And then leaving that space, we have a handicap ramp that takes you up into the east wing, up there. And you can see, we'll go to the upper... There we are, coming through. You'll see a circular space there, and that's actually an outdoor performance space. One of the requests from the students was, or from the teachers, was that there was a space large enough that small performances could be done. So that's why the shape of that is... Whoops. Is round. And behind that, there are several other plant habitats for study, and there's also a green wall with blackboards. And one thing I forgot to mention was that in demonstrating as many of the principles of sustainability as we could in this design and then the construction of it, we were challenged to repurpose as much of what is in the space now as we could. So we're taking the existing benches and making sculpture out of them on the wall. All of the plant material, some of it can be reused in the redesign, and that that can't be reused will be ground up as wood chip and we'll reuse the wood chip. So we try to think of every possible potential reuse of what's in there, also because it will save money. Access to the space is so tight that construction is going to be challenging as well. So anything we can leave in there and reuse is going to help the bottom line in the new construction. So leaving the performance space, that's the art room door. That's Gail's classroom, right, right there. Walking out her classroom, there's a small seat wall with a sort of a poetry slam reading, outdoor reading stage. And following that, there's another pergola. This one's planted with green material, and that is the third outdoor classroom space. This one's the least formal of the three. And the idea there was that it could be set up for either formal classroom space or as a place to have coffee, snacks, just more of a social space. And then leaving that area, we come into the art garden. And we have a garden space here that has room for six outdoor sculptures to be made by the art department. And they would be removable and could be, you know, adjusted over time as different students had different pieces to contribute and also perhaps, you know, sculpture from the community itself. And then there's finally another, there's another plant habitat, a bog garden there, where we're attempting to collect some of the roof rain, roof water runoff and demonstrate, again, another kind of wetland habitat. So, that's it, without the enclosure of the building around it. And now we're going to take you through it as if we're entering from the entry point that I showed you. Now you have to, this is a little dizzying. The SketchUp technology is going to whiz you around a few corners, so it's a little disorienting. But if you're walking into the space, you're going to be greeted by a student sculpture, some green, living green wall with, those are the benches, our repurposed benches. Steps up the bank that was too steep to walk up comfortably before, an entry plaque telling you where you are. And now we're coming up to the Garden of Memories and Reflections. And that's an outdoor blackboard there. And now we're whizzing around the corner. And then this is a look into the solar shade pergola. And back around to the entrance. So that's the bottom end of the west wing. We're whizzing along the wall, and this is as if you were under the shade solar pergola, looking back the other direction. And this is the walkway that then takes you through the first plant habitat on the left. And you'll see the overpass there that connects the two wings of the building. And then we go down through the overpass, and those walls are murals for the art department to create for us. And then this is the transition to the upper space where we had a significant grade to negotiate, so half of it will be handicap accessible and the other half will have stairs. And then this is entering the performance space with... Ooh, through the plants. It's another green wall with the repurposed benches. And then this is an outdoor, an outdoor blackboard space. And the idea with the circle space was that chairs or small aluminum bleacher sets could be brought up and set out for performances or for classroom space. And there's a storage shed for all of that stuff to be tucked away in. This is the poetry slam circle here. And the bricks that you see in it are repurposed bricks that are in the site now. And then we're walking through to the shade pergola, which is the third, through the bushes. This is the third classroom space, set up with café tables, a little more informally. And that's looking from the art room door. And then this is the sculpture garden. And there's a double, there are double doors there which don't exist now. And part of what we proposed was another entrance from inside the school to make access a little bit easier. And now we're going to fly up and look at it from the far end. And now you can really get a sense of the whole space with the buildings enclosing it. So that's the west wing, separated by the overpass and the east wing. And then these, this is a board of just some of the side elements that fit the sustainability criteria, using green roofs and living walls, solar pump to run the water feature, LED lamps, permeable paving where paving is necessary, the photovoltaic panels for the solar pergola, and then seating made from recycled materials. And these are just some frozen shots looking at the spaces that we just flew through. So this brings us to the what's next, which is, okay, this is really, I think, has the potential to transform a space that is really unusable at this point into an incredible outdoor learning environment that would support all of the curriculums in the school and welcome all of the students in the school. And as I had mentioned earlier, we've formed a post-project committee to look at how we might fund this and engage the faculty to stay involved with this. And also, there are a lot of moving parts in the design that have not been fully designed yet with the intention that the students would be involved, more involved in that. Certainly many of the art projects and the planting projects, some of the maintenance and some of the smaller construction projects are all things that we would like very much to see the students themselves involved with in terms of design and production. So, and we have, we have just started to look at, you know, how we might fund this. And Gail has been wonderful and has written a grant that we'll be submitting to the Champlin Foundation for their next granting cycle. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Catherine. Let me see if there's questions here at the table. Jim?
At any one time, how many classrooms could you have, I mean, weather permitting, but how many classrooms could you...
You could have three classrooms functioning at any given time outside.
And that would allow other milling around of students or not?
Well, milling about doesn't really occur except in a study hall. So when classrooms are being held in the spaces, then students aren't passing through. Passing through only occurs between the classroom breaks. So at any given time, three teachers could sign up to use three separate spaces. And if one of the allotted spaces happened to be the informal space for students who, say, earned the privilege to, you know, sit out and have their lunch under the shade pergola, that space could be separated from the academic spaces.
Terrific plan, great job.
Well, thank you.
Other questions? Meg?
I just have a quick question. As far as the upkeep and maintenance to that, would that be at the discretion of the school or would that be the landscape architect or company that would be coming in there to...
Well, right now, the existing courtyard is maintained, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that it's part of the maintenance contract that exists for the whole facility. Our thought was that they would probably need to be, we actually tried to design this so that there would be less maintenance required. And what maintenance was required of the plant material mostly would be incorporated into some of the curriculum as well so that, you know, the students would have some opportunity for responsibility there. It's a great teaching opportunity as well.
Carol?
How much do you think it would cost? Do you have any numbers associated with this?
We do. We did a, oh, I forgot, a really important committee person, John Manchester, who is a father of a, two students? Two students at the high school, who's also a landscape architect and a fabulous landscape contractor and who is also an alum of both South Kingston High and the Landscape Architecture Department. Department, and he's been a wonderful asset. So, he was kind enough to, you know, take our preliminary plan and just help us run some budget numbers. So, we priced everything that could be priced, you know, in the best-case scenario if you were going out and hiring, you know, every piece of it to be built outside. And we have sort of a moving target number in the $400,000 range, but that's subject to, you know, how much of it was done by different pieces in-house. And there's also the opportunity for, I think, a lot of donations. Certainly, the Master Gardeners at URI, the Rhode Island Nursery and Landscape Association, there are a lot of organizations, you know, for whom helping a project like this would be a wonderful fit with their mission statement, so.
Wow. Well, it's a great, great plan, and it looks fabulous. Money's always the issue, though, as we know.
Money's always the issue, right.
Especially with schools.
Right.
But, all of this would be, there's nothing that would be rain resistant, I mean, everything would be rain resistant out there, right?
Right.
You wouldn't have to move all those desks and tables in every time it rained.
No. There is, we did incorporate two, I forgot to point them out, but they're sort of tucked away into spaces that were hard to give another program to, but they're two storage areas for the wintertime, you know, to put blackboards and that type of stuff away. But yeah, all of the side amenities could be left out. And the idea, too, is that because it's such a microclimate in there, you really get quite a broad extension of use. You know, I think it's reasonable, I mean, I've been in there just about every month of the school year now, and there were really only maybe two times that I was in the space where it was just uncomfortable. So, I think it's, you know, it's reasonable to assume that.
And right now, it looks like those pictures with the trees down and everything?
Yes.
Nobody's done anything with that, huh? Huh? Wow.
And we still go, and some kids still try to find their spot.
Really?
Right.
Just because it's where they want to be.
Yeah.
If I could just add?
Yeah, I was going to say, if you guys want to add?
I'd also add how we're trying hard to educate our youth with the environment, climate change, being aware of the footprint that we put on our spaces, and to give the kids opportunities to have ownership to the environment where they live and go to school. And this is a perfect opportunity for them to feel like it's their space and to learn more about it versus always staying inside. I think that.
Oh, absolutely.
There's a joke, you know, kids playing outside nowadays, they're sitting on their front steps with their iPod touch, you know, and how we want them to really be engaged in the environment and the world in which they live, and how all the teachers are so excited about the opportunity to get the kids involved in understanding eco-literacy and being involved and invested in their own community. And the, my seniors that are like, "Oh, this is going to happen when we're gone," you know, but the idea that we're just trying to educate our future, and these are really hot topics, and we need to act on forward-thinking, and education's changing, and we need to change with it. This is a really good.
It would be great if you could get the kids to do as much as possible.
Well, that's our, that's our goal. Yeah, that's, we have advisory, we have classes that teach those types of concepts, and the more we have teachers invested in each one of those little spaces, we want to maintain, like, I'll maintain the art space, and then the science teachers and the math teachers, and all of us will be invested in it, because we take pride in our school and we want multiple opportunities to teach students in new ways. And getting outside the four walls and trying to teach them in that new, you know, the multi-intelligences, and to try to get kids to learn in a variety of ways. This is provided in this situation that you really can't get in any other situation versus, like, living it and having those opportunities.
You could give them portfolio credits for doing work out there.
With the volunteer hours.
They'd jump for that, right?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say that this is such a cutting-edge concept. It's really, you know, what they mean by the term place-based education, you know, it's really using the physical place that you're at as part of your learning opportunity and environment. And RIDE would like to use this project as their poster child, you know, when this policy becomes formalized and they put it up on their webpage. So, just so that you know, it's really, you know, it's a cutting edge.
RIDE, you mean the Department of Education? Maybe they'll pay for it.
Maybe. Well, actually, actually, they do have, they will actually reimburse, they will reimburse 35% of the hard costs. They do have money that they will kick in, so.
Dr. Anthony Maka?
So, thank you. Nice to be back. And wonderful presentation. One of the last things that I went through on the school committee was proposing that we, our initial step in this process was to hire a professional to give us some idea where to go. And Catherine's done that very well. I think the magic is we come up with a half million dollars, obviously. And so I have remained on this committee with the hope of working with others to figure out how to better this physical plant in which we educate children, and such an investment for the community. You know, education costs, both private and public, you know, just continue to skyrocket, and how we can save families money because they feel comfortable in sending their kids to our high school without them sensing that this is a physical plant that's crumbling around our students. So, you know, we talked about RIDE, we talked about grants, but obviously, I think ultimately there's also going to have to be a discussion between the school committee, the town council, town manager, in regards to what is feasible. I'm concerned now, in the context of what is there, seems to have some environmental hazards, and perhaps an initial step is just a real good cleanup and to get that space prepared. But, you know, I appreciate the time that the council has given this tonight, along with the school committee earlier, and hopefully we can continue to move forward and update you along the way.
Thank you. I'd like to just make some comments that this absolutely was a powerful presentation and strong advocate for hands-on learning, and really appreciate, you know, visual learners to be able to see the runoff watering the gardens and different things that you have highlighted here. It's a wonderful opportunity for students. The other piece that really is intriguing for me is the memorial for the passing of two students. And research does show that when, you know, they see a movie in school with the loss of a loved one, you know, or a fellow student, it doesn't really stay with them unless they see it, you know, a memorial every single day. And that's really a strong point for me, to send the message to our youth. I know that two or three years ago, I got a phone call from a parent who did lose a child in town, and there was a memorial on the side of the road with flowers, and she said if there was ever a place in town where, you know, kids didn't have to go on the side of the road or could just go someplace quietly and sit and reflect with the loss of that life. It's very powerful, and if there's anything that could be grown from the two students that we have lost into, you know, a memorial for some other students that have passed, I think that would just be another positive reinforcement to our student population.
I agree, and that was really a very strong part of the conversation from the very beginning, was, you know, how do we continue to honor the two students who, whose passing has been commemorated in that space? And then how do we provide for, you know, other tragic events? And maybe it's not even the passing of a person, maybe it's some other kind of loss, but a way for students to be able to process on an emotional level as well. So, that was a big, big piece of the inspiration.
So, we look forward to the continued dialogue, and I know when there is some opportunity for us to make a donation, I know, sign me up.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time. We really appreciate it and your support.
I just had one more question. Was there ever a vegetable garden out there? Wasn't there at one time?
There was, there was, yeah.
It was, the vegetable garden was moved to the outer corner of the school, which was the main house. And because that program has expanded.
It wasn't big enough anymore.
Wow.
So, yeah, we, they had this question about growing vegetables and serving them as a cafeteria.
Oh, that's great.
So, I think that that program would also help maintain the inside corner because that program has grown, it's actually grown out of the courtyard.
Wow. Yeah, I think it's so important for hands-on learning like that, and so many high school kids do so much better that way.
Absolutely.
Than sitting in a classroom, looking at a book or just listening.
Right.
Many times, we know they're not always listening.
And I'd also like to acknowledge another person here tonight, the chair of our planning board, Maria Mack. I know that she was a strong advocate for this presentation tonight as well.
Yes, and if I fail to mention it, she's also on our committee. Did I fail to mention that? I apologize. My nerves get the better of me. But yes, she's been an avid supporter and a great resource, and we're thrilled to have her on board.
We agree.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Communication. It's eight, Communication N, it's C. This is a communication dated April 15th, 2013, from Mike Rushon, Staff Assistant National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, requesting a proclamation to commemorate National Missing Children's Day on May 25th, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
Well, we discussed this at the work session, and of course, we would recommend adopting this communication and sending the proclamation to commemorate National Missing Children's Day on May 25th. So, I move that we approve Communication C.
Second?
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is Communication D. This is a communication dated April 29th, 2013, from Megan DeRess, editor, inviting the council to contribute to a new community magazine, Wakefield Life, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. I just want to see if Megan is with us tonight. Okay.
Well, I think we'd like to hear from her, to hear a little more about this magazine called Wakefield Life, and certainly anybody's free to contribute to the magazine, but we discussed it at the work session, and we're going to place it on file. So, I move we place it on file.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F is a resolution adopted April 23rd, 2013, by the South Kingston High School Committee, School Committee, and May 6th, 2013, by the North Smithfield Town Council, requesting the General Assembly to enact legislation that would amend Rhode Island General Law 16-21-1, which is transportation of public and private school pupils to authorize local school committees to utilize bus monitors at their discretion, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
Well, we discussed this at the work session. I know there's some difference of opinion here, but I'm going to move that we approve Communication F.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any discussion? I just am going to vote against this, only because I would like to look at the history of any accidents in the town with prior to having bus monitors. So, with that said.
I just wanted to say that I will support it because our school committee supports it, and it gives the discretion to the local school committees to utilize bus monitors. It doesn't completely eliminate them, but I certainly understand your position, Ella.
Any other further discussion? We have a motion is second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Abstentions. Motion carries 4-1-0. Next item is G. This is a communication dated April 25th, 2013, from Laura Panzer, Director of Program and Training Girl Scouts of Rhode Island Incorporated, announcing that Maria Roth has achieved the gold award and requesting a certificate of recognition and received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
Well, of course, we would, I would move that we ask the town clerk to prepare a certificate of recognition, announcing that Maria Roth has achieved the gold award for the Girl Scouts of Rhode Island. And I would move that we would ask the town clerk to prepare that certificate of recognition.
I'll second.
And I will also call Maria Roth to see if there's going to be recognition at the local level, and hopefully, we'll get someone from the town council to attend. So, we have a motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have aye. This is a request by Council President Whaley to adopt a resolution supporting General Assembly Bills, House 5935 and Senate 836, Acts Relating to Public Utilities and Carriers, Municipal Streetlight Investment Act that would establish a procedure to allow municipalities to purchase rather than rent their streetlights for the purpose of reducing municipal streetlighting costs, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
I move that we support this resolution by Council President Whaley, and that our resolution be sent to all 39 cities and towns.
Second?
Motion is second. Any discussion?
You also want to add your vote to the General Assembly?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Does the board of the resolution that's served quite received in the main office?
Thank you. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have Item J. This is a request by Councilman O'Neil to adopt a resolution requesting that the planning board undertake an immediate study and review of the existing regulatory structure concerning development and redevelopment along the town's south shore, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
As I said in the work session, I am withdrawing that resolution from tonight's agenda.
I hope you'll resubmit it, Jim.
It will not be resubmitted.
So, at this point, there's just no vote? Comments from interested citizens. This is the time where anyone would like to come to the microphone and have a say. I just have a few announcements. I just want to congratulate the Welcome House for their successful walk on Saturday morning. The rain held out, and everybody was happy campers. Anybody have anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, I will move to Jim.
Yes, Steve, did University of Rhode Island work with you or the police department in their decision to take the graduation ceremony inside the Ryan Center? Was that their decision alone, the Board of Governors? Can you help me out on that?
I'm not aware of how that decision was made. Chief, was there any involvement with the town?
Police Department has been invited to attend meetings. We have attended meetings in the planning of the graduation, and we've been asked to participate. We are going to have a contingent present at the graduation, but it's still a work in progress. But we are an integral part of the planning from day one.
I think the question specifically was, were we involved in the decision to move it from a quadrangle?
No, not at all. Not at all. That was a decision solely from the administration of the university.
But certainly, we would have had a contingent inside or outside up there. Yeah, okay. I'm just sorry to see that happen. I know some student groups were upset, too. I don't think we should bouter this kind of activity that took place at the Boston Marathon. But it is what it is, so unfortunately, it's going to be inside.
Whatever support the police department can give, we will certainly. Whatever support the Police Department can give, we will certainly render that support.
Thanks, Chief.
I agree with you, Jim, on that. And Chief, it's a shame, and I know it has nothing to do with us, but it is a shame that was moved indoors. And now everyone only has, all the graduating students only get two invite, invites, invitations to the ceremony. And that's, you know, the history of URI has been outdoors and anybody, you know, standing room, wherever. It's just too bad.
I just feel badly...
I don't disagree with you, but that's a policy which is outside the realm of my involvement.
I feel badly for the kids that have been there, though, for four years, and this is really the first year aside from rain that it's been done. And to have, I mean, I have a daughter who is graduating, and to just have the accessibility of my husband and I, what's going to happen to our son? He can't even see his sister graduate unless he goes to the after ceremonies and grandparents and immediate family. It's just kind of disappointing after the accomplishments. I know it is definitely beyond the spectrum of what your scope is there, but I think a lot of people feel the same way.
The policy has been made by the administration of the universities with no involvement from the Police Department.
Oh, I understand that.
And Chief, is it your knowledge that it's solely based on a safety issue because of the incident that occurred? When was it? Was it March?
The dawn issue?
When was it? April or March?
April.
April?
Yeah.
Well, it's too bad.
They've always had the contingency plan to have it inside. I mean, and I graduated on the quadrangle. Chasing rain that day would have been in a keenie gym, so.
Yeah.
Things go, unfortunately.
Oh, well.
Thank you.
Any other comments from interested citizens?
Yes, I'd just like to say each year, the South Kingston Lodge of the Elk selects an individual in the community that has shown outstanding dedication and commitment to helping others and recognize them as Citizen of the Year. And this year, they have selected Jack Soravo of Belmont Market in Wakefield to be a recipient of this award. Jack has continuously demonstrated through his generosity and commitment to giving back to the community by approving the many donation requests that he receives for purpose of helping others. And there will be a time for him sometime later in the month. But I'd like to thank Jack. I know Jack, and Jack does help out the community immensely.
Certainly second that, Paul. Jack Soravo has been absolutely overwhelming with his charitable work for this community.
Right. Two other dates that I just want to mention to the Town Council is, I think we all received an invitation from CARES, Connecting the Resources for Educational Support, and I believe that's May thirtieth at the Land Trust, four to six. Didn't get that. That's usually something that we usually attend, where they recognize a lot of their volunteers. And then we have our Memorial Day Parade coming up, so hopefully we'll all be there. I know I sent, you didn't get the Memorial Day Parade?
Oh, I did. It was in our packet. It was in a little envelope.
Oh, lastly.
I was out of town, so, yeah.
So I'm sure we'll all be, we'll all be there. With that said, let's move on to the Town Manager's Report.
Just one item I wanted to reference. Next Monday on May twentieth, there'll be a workshop here in the council chambers to be conducted by State DOT relative to the Dale Collier Intersection Improvements. That'll go from the Narragansett Town Line down to Old Mountain Field and that general vicinity. So I think that's an important project for community input to be provided. There's a number of things the project's going to be looking at. One will be changing lane configurations at Dale Collier Corner, as well as what the state calls a road diet, which is really a restricting of double lanes down to single lanes as a means of trying to reduce traffic speeds. There'll also be a number of curb modifications that'll be made. All of the businesses and business owners, property owners, along that stretch are being notified, and hopefully they can participate and review the various map details that'll be around the room. Same thing was held last week on High Street. It'll be the same type of a format. There'll be maps that'll be provided up front, engineers available to be able to answer specific questions from various property owners or where there's concerns, and then there'll be a short general presentation to be able to generate the input. These are important projects for the community in terms of dealing with some of the major traffic, traffic areas that we manage, and hopefully with better planning, we can get better results. So we certainly invite everybody to come into that meeting next Monday. It'll be from six to eight will be the session. So at six o'clock, they'll start out providing the people probably fifteen to twenty minutes to be able to walk through the map areas and be able to come up with the questions, and then there'll be the general presentation. So hopefully, we'll get some good attendance at that meeting and some good comments for DOT before that project comes to a construction, a final construction detail. I don't have anything else at this point, unless there's questions on any of the three reports that have been issued since the last council meeting.
Steve, I just have a question for you, and I'm not sure if that fits into the Town Manager's Report, but seeing that we had two wonderful candidates for the Library Board, what is the process that we would follow if we were to consider adding?
I believe the Library Boards are set by state statute as far as the size is concerned. I don't think that there's, I think we could review it, Ella, but I couldn't tell you that it's not, it's not the type of board which is just assigned by the council. There may be statutory provisions as far as the numbers. We'd have to check that.
Okay. Does anybody have any objection if I put that request into Steve?
No.
I know that we've done that with economic development, so.
Yeah, we'll take, see, Economic Development Committee would be a locally assigned committee. I think that some of the boards that are directed, whether it's zoning, planning, recreation, and library boards, may be directly associated with state statute, but we can take a look at that.
Thank you. Okay. Town Solicitors Report. Thank you. Which brings us to Appointments. And...
Route one thirty-eight reconstruction.
Right. Route one thirty-eight reconstruction project. We, we could maybe do four of those.
One, two, three, four, five of them, right? They all wish to be reappointed.
And one of them has not attended any meetings, so we're going to... My question with that, Susan, is it no attendance at the meeting because there was no meeting since he was appointed? No. Just no attendance. Okay.
So you want to just appoint?
Any of them? Okay. So I could support, what is it? Four of the five?
Do the four of them?
Yeah. That'd be great. Is that okay?
All right, I move that we reappoint Doral, Dorald Beasley, Randall Carnahan.
He's the one that didn't attend.
Oh, sorry, not Randall Carnahan. Gail Faris, Diane Johnson, and Peter Maynard to serve on the Route one thirty-eight Reconstruction Project Area Committee for a period of two years. Their term expires in May of two thousand and thirteen, and their new term will go to May two thousand and fifteen.
I second that.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And next item on the agenda is New Business thirteen B. This is a resolution authorizing the extension of a water bid originally granted on June twenty-third, two thousand and eight, and extended on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and ten, May twenty-third, two thousand and eleven, and May fourteenth, two thousand and twelve to Mega Mechanical Services, formerly Harrington Engineering Incorporated, two ninety-three Oakwood Drive, Gloucester Berry, Connecticut, for HVAC maintenance service at the Public Safety Complex for the period July first, two thousand and thirteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, in accordance with the terms and conditions of the bid specifications. And the following is listed. So further described in a memorandum from the Police Chief to Town Manager dated May sixth, two thousand and thirteen, entitled Recommendation for Bid Extension HVAC Maintenance Contract, Public Safety Complex Period, July first, two thousand and thirteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. Steve?
As noted in the Chief's memo, we've been able to obtain an extension of the contract that was last approved with no changes in what the fees are. There will be a reinstitution of a truck charge of sixty-five dollars for each service call, which had been taken out of the last contract, but that would be the only change in the contract. We've had good service from this company. They're certainly well familiar with the equipment at the police station, and we'd recommend approval as presented in the Chief's memo.
Do we have motion?
I move approval of New Business Item B.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. New Business C is a resolution authorizing a water bid to First Student Incorporated, thirty-eight Stilson Road, Richmond, Rhode Island, for bus transportation services for a three-year contract from July first, two thousand and thirteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, in accordance with all bidding specifications and at unit prices as bid and amounts not to exceed fifteen thousand four, fifteen thousand four hundred dollars for fiscal year thirteen fourteen, sixteen thousand two hundred and forty for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen fifteen, and seventeen thousand eighty dollars for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen sixteen, subject to annual appropriation of funds and as further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated May seventh, two thousand and thirteen, and entitled Recommendation for Bid Award Bus Transportation.
We're looking, as Terry's memo indicates, at the lowest qualified bidder. This is for the Recreation Department-related bus transportation that occurs with any of our different camps or activities, whether it's the stepping stone program or whether it's the youth camps during the summer. We've worked with First Student in the past and see no problem with accepting them as the low bid. I would note that we've got a three-year contract here. The language of the resolution has been specifically written to ensure that we have a one-year contract that's approved, and it'll be subject to appropriations for the next two years for it to move forward.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of New Business Item C.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. New Business Item D is a resolution accepting and endorsing the document entitled Town of South Kingston Energy Management Guide, March two thousand and thirteen, as a general process tool for use and furtherance of the community's commitment to energy conservation, cost reduction, facility efficiency, and reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, as further described in a memorandum from the Director of Planning to the Town Manager dated May eighth, two thousand and thirteen, and entitled South Kingston's Energy Management Guide.
I think the Council is well aware that we have spent a great deal of time and effort in keeping energy management activities in the forefront on managing all of our facilities. The Energy Management Guide that you have with you tonight has been prepared by the URI Outreach Center on the town's behalf. If you recall, three years ago, we became involved in the Climate Showcase Communities Grant and have been able to get a lot of things accomplished, and in fact, we continue to move forward. As outlined in Vin's memorandum, this is the next step in terms of at least identifying resources and different activities that we can do. But we're continuing to move. Now, we've dealt with the, with Public Services Building, we've dealt with Peacedale Library, we've dealt with Town Hall, we've dealt with the police station. We're now dealing with Peacedale Library. We will be doing a lighting transition there as well. And with that library, what we'll be able to use is endowment fund proceeds to be able to pay the local cost. So we're continuing to look at some efforts that are reducing the footprint that the community is developing in terms of energy uses. And we think that not just having the goal statement that the Council adopted last year, but also recognition of the guide document that's been prepared on our behalf is an important step for the community as a recognition of where we want to take energy management practices for the, for the community. We asked the Council to adopt this. I'd also asked Vin if he'd be prepared to say a few words on this issue. He's done an excellent job in coordinating the activities for the energy program, along with John Shock and with the Police Chief and the Library Director. So we've had a lot of different departments directly involved. We've also got a building manager now certified who can be providing, train the trainer, training through the trainer for our other building managers. So we've got a lot of good things going, and we want the community to be aware of it because I think that the next step, too, is to try to get the community more involved in how they can save energy at home as well. Would that give Vin a minute? I say a minute because we know it'll take him five.
He's going to hold you to that now.
Steve provided a good summary. This has been a good opportunity for the town to get involved entirely on a grant-funded basis. A few years ago, we had the Energy Efficiency in the Community Block Grant through the, under the ARA program, the Recovery Program, and we were able to do retrofits for, you know, gas-to-oil conversions here at the Town Hall and at the, at the main library. And I think early returns are that we've saved a good deal of money into the heating season. I don't know how the exact figures, but we're recently just about completing a project over at the police station to retrofit the lighting there under an EPA grant under the Climate Community Showcase. And I think that's due to save, projected to save the town about sixteen thousand dollars a year in electricity costs. I think the police station, after our sewage treatment plant, is the second-largest electricity user among town facilities, and they're going to have a better lighting product and more control of the lighting. And now, as Steve mentioned, that's going to transition, and we're also taking advantage of end-grid incentives that they are required to provide to the PUC. So it's been really good results, and it's really had us thinking more about how we can save, save a dollar, provide a better product, have more comfortable facilities. And as Manager mentioned, I try to extend that thinking to our citizenry through the website-based tools. And I would say the URI Outreach Program has been a really good partner. They, they spent a tremendous amount of time assembling database of energy use for, I think, four years for the town. So they really, we've got a lot of good participation from them under this grant program, and it's something that I think EPA is looking to see these, you know, it's a demonstration program, so they're going to try to extend it to other communities, but we are, we get in on the ground floor and with good results, so.
And we've also seen the folks that are running the URI program have moved into the State Office of Energy Merit, Mary Angol, who has been, you know, involved with all of our meetings, is now the Director with that program. So there's a lot of good things. I also would like to enclose and recognize Mark Russo, a building manager that works for both the Police Department and the libraries. Mark has gone through the education program to be the building, a certified building manager, and has really been instrumental to us in terms of pushing the projects forward and making sure that we don't drop the ball, particularly with the police and particularly with the library programs, in terms of keeping the project in front of us to be able to get the decisions made. So I think we've got a lot to be proud of and to demonstrate, but this is just the next step, and we hope the Council will be supportive of it.
Just want to thank you for all that work that's been done, and the taxpayers, I'm sure, are going to be thrilled with the amount of savings that are going to occur, you know, year after year, so.
Jeff was mentioning that the preliminary estimates as far as the gas at the Town Hall use versus the oil could almost half what we paid last year.
It's unbelievable.
Or even a little bit more than that. So you're talking in the area of ten thousand dollars worth of savings. For one heating season.
I was over at the Veterans of Foreign War on Sunday, and they also stated the same thing, that their, their costs have been significantly reduced now that they've been tied into the gas line, so.
Be hopeful that the gas company before High Street is finished would continue and bring that line down to, to the, to Peacedale, because I think that there's a number of houses... houses that could use that service and see considerable savings.
Good things happening in South Kingston, so.
I move approval of New Business Item D.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and we are officially adjourned at 9:12. Thank you.